I called to order the regular meeting. Is that on?
Yeah.
I call to order the regular meeting of the Board of Education Thursday, February 20th, 2025 at 4:40 PM with Juan Cervantes, Andres Cruz, Jonathan Monroe, and Shaw present. Patricia, are there any requests from the public to speak on closed session items prior to the Board adjourning into closed session? Thank you. We will now adjourn into closed session regarding the following matters which are all described in detail on the printed agenda: Conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation, two possible cases; conference with legal counsel, existing litigation, one case; a student admission, student discipline matters; conference with labor negotiators, ACT and CSCEA negotiations; and public employee discipline dismissal release.
I now reconvene the regular meeting of the Board of Education at 6:00 PM with Juan Cervantes, Andres Cruz, Jonathan Monroe, Mr. Na is absent, and Sonia Shaw present. Before we begin, please silence all electronic devices and note that these proceedings are being recorded. Patricia?
The Board met in closed session from 4:40 PM to 5:48 PM regarding conference with legal counsel anticipated litigation to possible cases, conference with legal counsel existing litigation one case, a student admission, student discipline matters, conference with labor negotiators, ACT and CSCA negotiations, and public employee discipline dismissal release. By a vote of four zero with Cervantes, Cruz, not Cervantes, Cruz, Monroe, and Shaw voting yes and Na absent, accepted the resignation agreement and released from the district permanent certificated employee identified as employee number six five zero effective June 30th, 2025. And pursuant to Education Code 44929.21, by a vote of four zero with Cervantes, Cruz, Monroe, and Shaw voting yes and Na absent, the Board authorized the superintendent or is designated to issue a notice of non-relection to certificated employees identified by employee numbers two nine eight six seven, two nine one six nine, two nine six eight five, three zero zero six three, two nine four four one, three zero zero six four, two nine seven two one, three zero one one two, two nine two nine four. And by a vote of four zero with Cervantes, Cruz, Monroe, and Shaw voting yes and Na absent, directed advocates for faith and freedom legal counsel to initiate legal action to challenge the ruling in the Freedom from Religion Foundation lawsuit, and authorize and direct legal counsel to pursue further litigation in this matter, including but not limited to filing the appropriate petitions and motions, and taking all necessary legal steps to ensure that the constitutional questions presented in this case are properly addressed before the court. No further action was taken, which requires public disclosure.
Thank you, Patricia. I appreciate that. And now, we are on to one of my favorites. We're here tonight to do recognition. We have, we're actually joined by students from Myella High School Business Entrepreneurship Pathway. Oh, I'm, pledge. I skipped. Mr. Miller, and he's our honored guest to lead us in the pledge. Please lead us in the pledge.
Thank you for having me. If you could stand, if you, if you can, please place your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. You may be seated. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Miller, and for all your time today, too. Okay, now we're on to one of our favorites. Tonight, we're joined by students from Myella High School Business Entrepreneurship Pathway Program and teacher Art, Mr. Art Born, and the students Sean Choi, Ryan Chow, and Brady Smith, who recently complete competed as a team at the state leadership conference, and earned a first place award in sports and entertainment management, and a second place award in international business, competing with over 3,000 students from across the state. Mr. Born and students, if you would, please join me at the mic. Very grateful for your hard work, and if you would like, you can give a little bit of spot input on the program and what the boys have accomplished.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much, President Shaw. Good evening, good evening Superintendent Enfield, school board members, senior staff, colleagues, students, and everybody else in the audience. It's been my honor and privilege for the past five years to be a part of the FBLA program, as well as creating the Business Entrepreneurship Pathway, the only one in the state inside of an AP class, two AP classes. And so, these students, I got to know as ninth graders in APM and GEO. And they've been with me, and I've been with them throughout, and these are all seniors, and they're going on to great things. You know, Brady got admitted to Stanford, so he's gonna go to Stanford, or maybe not. He's got options. He's got plenty of options. And, and the students perform at just the highest level, and they engage in the program. They, they absolutely love it. They go, we go to these FBLA conferences, both at the regional level, where there's, you know, ten, eleven high schools, from that to state, where there's seventy-four, seventy-five high schools, and that's where these three gentlemen earned, and, and they too have their trophies, but Sean never got his trophy. So I said, what a great opportunity, Sean, if you could step up, please, if we can give you a second place finish in international business, and a first place finish in sports and entertainment management. Congratulations. And I, and I do want to say one other thing. Then they went to Nationals. Fourteen thousand, okay? Canada, some, some other schools from different parts of the world, fourteen thousand, and these three gentlemen placed eighth. Eight. What's super interesting is, which do you think they represented? They could only do one. Is it sports entertainment, where they won, or is it business entrepreneurship, or is it international business, where they came in second? International business, thinking that they would be able to attend again and compete with internet, uh, sports entertainment management. So, without further ado, would you mind if they said something? They would love to say something. So we have either Ryan or Brady?
Hello, I'm Ryan Chow, and I just wanted to come here and thank the Board and the district generally for all the support you've given to FBLA. Getting the chance to do FBLA with, you know, my peers has been an opportunity of a lifetime. I've learned so much, and have gotten to see, see so much, and so, I really want to thank you all, and I hope that you guys continue to show your support for programs like FBLA in the future. So, thank you.
Okay, so, in representing Sean and Brady, they too would like to thank the Board and Superintendent Enfield, and, and especially Dr. Park, really a special person at the district, and we really appreciate her support. Right, I'll save the rest for some other time. Okay, thank you.
Well, no, we're very proud of you and honored to be able to honor you guys tonight for all your hard work. I mean, just hearing even more details about it tonight, we're very impressed, and we're just grateful that you guys stuck through. I know some of the familiar faces here, which is awesome, you just kept in there and kept going, so congratulations. We would love to know, you know, eventually what four year you guys decide to go into, so we could celebrate with you, but we would definitely like to honor you guys tonight. We have Brady Smith. Thank you. Congratulations. Ryan Chow, you guys are playing musicals, so I was trying to put them in order. Congratulations. Great job. And then we have Sean. Congratulations, very good job. Thank you so very much. If you guys would like, we would love to take a picture with you.
That would be fantastic.
I know parents are saying yes, so.
Thank you.
Board? Superintendent, Dr. Born, if I were you to join them, too?
Okay, one, two, three.
Awesome job, guys. And if you want, you're more than welcome to stay, or you can exit now. It's totally up to you. I know you guys got studying to do and a lot of stuff to, to work on with school. Okay.
May I address the Board for just a second?
Sure.
So, currently at Ayala, these students and others are being prevented from registering to the next competition, to state. And so, I'm, I'm working with administration and everybody else, but it, it seems like it's the cross-country team before it happened. So, I was concerned with if I should say something to you, or not say something to you, if it was out of order, or not out of order, but we think so much of you. We know that you would not want to be informed of students being denied their opportunities. So, thank you for hearing me.
Absolutely. Thank you. Okay, we're now on to our staff report. Next is Mr. Hackney, presenting the LCAP Vineyard Update, Part Two.
Good evening, President Shaw, members of the Board, Superintendent Enfield, Cabinet and Community. Our report to the Board this evening is on the second part of the Local Control and Accountability Plan, also known as the LCAP. This report offers a mid-year snapshot of the available data alongside our expenditures and the implementation level of actions outlined in our current LCAP. As a reminder, our existing LCAP consists of four overarching goals designed to address the eight state priorities. Tonight, we will only report mid-year progress on Goals Three and Four and their associated metrics, actions, and services, as a report for Goals One and Two occurred at the January meeting. LCAP Goal Three states that all students are prepared for college and career beyond graduation. The metrics for Goal Three are reported tonight as met, in progress, or to be determined with a specified timeframe of when that will occur. Essential standards assessment participation will be completed and determined in May. Our student achievement scores on the CASP in English Language Arts, Math, and Science have increased, and we have met our desired outcome. Our English learner reclassification rates and results of the English Language Proficiency Assessment remain steady over the past several years with slight variations, and we are in progress with this metric. We continue to see increases on our college and career indicator, and we have met our desired outcome. Our students earning a three or higher on advanced placement exams has increased, and we have met our desired outcome. Students earning college credit has also increased, and we have met our desired outcome. Presented in a left-to-right format, the table showcases the key metrics comprising our college and career report. All four metrics for the 2023-2024 academic year experienced growth compared to the previous year. For your reference, we've included the county and state results for the 2023-2024 school year. Notably, Chino Valley graduates surpassed both the county and state averages across all measures. There are 19 actions identified that support LCAP Goal Three. On this slide, you will see the first nine actions. Column one indicates the actions, followed by the budgeted amount, then estimated actuals through mid-year, and the last column reflects our implementation level for each action. The last column will show fully implemented or partially implemented. Partially implemented indicates we're in process, and those actions will be completed by the end of the school year. For Action Six, our college nights at our junior high and high schools will continue through this spring, and you will see some actions with a zero-dollar amount that support our high school students with being prepared for college and career. This means these actions still occur, but with existing staff within our organization. Actions sixteen and seventeen support our dual-language immersion program and bilingual pathways, and the assessment resources needed to determine students' multilingual abilities. For Action Nineteen, our regional occupation program allows students to increase career readiness. The state requires districts to establish a goal specific for our schools with high transancy rates and high percentages of socio-economically disadvantaged students. LCAP Goal Four supports our students at our continuation high schools, Buena Vista and Boys Republic, and our Community Day School, Chino Valley Learning Academy. While these schools have unique challenges, there are huge celebrations to acknowledge. The graduation rate at Buena Vista last year was over 95%, and the college and career indicator have far surpassed their school goals. Although we do not have the results from this year's school quality survey, past results have indicated that both students and parents are highly engaged and connected with their schools. Our CASP results have continued to increase district-wide, but as this goal is tied to only three schools, we continue to support teachers with professional development to address gaps, I'm sorry, to address unique challenges and their learning gaps. There are eight actions identified for LCAP Goal Four that specifically support Buena Vista, Chino Valley Learning Academy, and Boys Republic. For Action Two, math professional learning communities, as math is an area of need, math teacher teams have opportunities to collaborate on student learning and receive ongoing professional development. For Action Six, student connectedness, we have additional staff to support wraparound services for students, so they feel connected to their school. For Action Seven, Buena Vista Infant Toddler Center, we provide resources so all students can have access to childcare when they are a student and a parent. This concludes our update on Goal Four, and concludes the second part of our mid-year update to the Board of Education.
Thank you. We appreciate that. Board members, Dr. Enfield's staff, if you have questions, please use the light system and, or comments. And I have Mr. Cruz. Your mic is on.
Let me just say, thank you. You know, our, our scores, our, our graduation, and our, and our UCCSU are above the state standards, and we, we know this trend. There's a trend coming, and that is AI careers. So at least Chino Valley is on top of things. So, you know, when it comes to AI-driven careers and so forth, we are preparing our kids for that future, which is here already. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cruz. And yes, thank you. I love, um, let's see, sorry, I lost my track. On page five, just showing how last year, you guys were about a really significant amount, almost like 16, 17% higher than the county, which shows the hard work of our teachers and staff, and I want to just point that out. I appreciate everybody involved in our student success. And just speaking with Dr. Enfield, it looks like this year we're probably gonna smash those numbers, so thank you again. I just want to point those out because that just shows how geared you guys are towards education and making sure our kids have the tools for success. So, thank you very much. Seeing that there's no other questions, comments? Okay, thank you. Okay, we're now on to comments from our student rep, Gabriella. Oh, you need your mic?
Good evening, Board President Shaw, members of the Board, Superintendent Enfield, and distinguished guests. I would like to start off by congratulating our students for successfully completing the first six weeks of the second semester, or effectively transitioning to the third trimester. Way to go, CVUSD students. Don Lugo recently welcomed the class of 2029 with an orientation for Ramona Junior High and Briggs eighth-grade students, where they were given the opportunity to tour the school, along with learning about all the different programs offered. Additionally, on Tuesday, Don Lugo held their Future Freshman Night for all incoming students to have the chance to sign up for programs, clubs, and sports. Chino High School held their Rio-themed rally for winter sports, their annual live-streamed blood bank, blood drive, and will be holding their Cowboy Corral on February 25th from 5:00 to 7:00 PM. Ayala High School had their seniors vote for a theme for their up-and-coming prom at the San Juan Capistrano Mission. Also, the Ayala High School Choir will be holding a benefit concert supporting the Magic Penny Foundation on Friday, February 28th at 7:00 PM in the school NPR. Finally, Chino Hills High School hosted a career day for their students to learn about possible career paths, along with holding their senior recess and elections for their upcoming ASB Executive Board. Congratulations to those selected for the 2025 to 2026 school year. Lastly, next week, CVUSD high school students will be participating in Student Government Day. All students had the chance to select what position in the city they would like to shadow for the day. Some examples of these are mayor, school principal, the chief of police, and our very own school board members. We look forward to learning about our city government leaders and their important jobs. To end, I would also like to congratulate all winter sports athletes for their hard work this season and contribution to their theme. Thank you, and have a great rest of your evening.
Thank you so much, Gabriella. Next up are comments from our employee representatives. We have Stephen Fraser from ACT.
Hi, good evening. I wanted to take this opportunity today to address some critical issues that are affecting our students, our educators, and our community. Professional learning communities, or PLCs, are essential for improving student outcomes, fostering collaboration, and ensuring that educators have the resources they need to succeed. However, for PLCs to be effective, they must be teacher-driven. They are the ones in the classroom, working directly with students, and understand their revolving needs. The autonomy to lead PLCs ensures that educators can tailor their strategies to best support students, while maintaining their professional expertise. We urge the Board to continue prioritizing teacher leadership throughout the PLC process, and resist any efforts that diminish this influence. Secondly, our recent executive orders regarding immigration have raised a lot of concerns in our community with students and families. As educators, we believe that every student deserves a safe and an inclusive learning environment, free from fear and free from discrimination. Schools must remain a safe place, a refuge, if you will, for all students, regardless of their immigration status, and can focus on school without undue stress or worry. We ask this Board to reaffirm its commitment to protecting our students, and we believe this fits in with our mission of having safe schools. Tonight, I also want to recognize the importance of the public hearing on the ACT bargaining proposal. Our priorities include fair compensation, improved working conditions, and special ed support. We urge the Board throughout this process and the community to engage actively and support a fair and equitable agreement. And lastly, I'm excited to invite everyone to an important event coming up at the ACT office, hosted by our Equity and Human Rights Committee. This panel discussion will take place on March 1st from 1:30 to 4:30 PM. The event will feature distinguished Black educators and community leaders, and we'll discuss how we can better support Black students in our schools. This is a valuable opportunity for educators, parents, and community members to engage in meaningful dialogue. We invite all of you to attend. We look forward to working together, and thank you for protecting published, public education equity and teacher-driven collaboration. Have a great night. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fraser. It looks like we don't have Danny Hernandez from CSEA, if we have another rep, but if not, we'll have Emily Lau from CHAM.
Good evening, President Shaw, school board members, Superintendent Enfield, Cabinet, and Chino Valley community. Administrators, management personnel, teachers, classified staff work extremely hard to prepare our students every single day of the year, around the clock. And with that, though, the absolute best time, the things that we look forward to are the times when we get to stop and stand back and watch our students shine, as we witnessed today. So, just around the corner are a few things that are happening where we get that opportunity. So, one of them coming up is our art showcase. Students have been, we have very, very creative students, and teachers have been saving their artwork, things that they've been learning in school, and we will have an art, district art showcase to allow those students to shine. I encourage all community members and everybody to come and enjoy their artwork, and make sure that we celebrate these successes with our students. And next day, which Gabriella spoke about earlier, is Student Government Day. It is one of my personal favorite days of the year. I am always extremely impressed with the individuals that we have, that come to join all of our different community leaders. I, I sometimes just laugh and think we should just hire them all right then and there. They are so very, very talented and do such a wonderful job. Our band and choir showcases are coming up soon next month, and our music teachers are all, you know, fine-tuning and practicing with our students so that they, again, can come out and shine for us all. So, I just wanted to, to bring that out, because with all of the hard work we do, it's really important to celebrate the successes and just stand back and cheer for our students. Before I leave, I want to invite the community, or first, actually, thank the community, everybody who has participated in the K-12 Student Climate Insight Survey. And if you haven't had the opportunity to participate, please know that tomorrow is the last day. So, tonight, you can log on to our district website or any of the school websites, and take an opportunity to have your voice be heard, share your opinion. We really do read and look through all of your opinions and use that to make plans for the upcoming school year. So, I encourage you to do so if you haven't already done so. Thank you very much, and have a wonderful evening.
Thank you so much. And now, we're on to public comments. Pat, how many requests to speak?
Eleven.
Thank you. Board bylaw 9323, meeting conduct establishes the guidelines, and the following process applies. Speakers will be called in the order you are registered on the electronic request-to-speak device. Names are displayed on monitors. Please watch for your name to appear and line up at the designated numbers behind the mic, right in the middle. Once the recording secretary announces the first name, request to speak will no longer be accepted. Mr. Cruz, can you please explain the public comment guidelines? Hold on, I gotta queue you in.
Speakers, you have three minutes to address the Board. You cannot donate your time, one person at the mic at a time. If you read on behalf of an absent person, that will be considered your time. Begin comments with the clock starts. Please refer to Board Policy 1312.1 for the procedure regarding complaints against an employee. And lastly, speakers may not approach the devices anytime the Board is in session. Please give any materials you wish distributed to the Board Recording Secretary.
The first speaker is Glory Chigorelli, followed by Scott Rossin, followed by Amanda Swagger.
Martin Luther King Jr., a famous civil rights icon, far-right MAGA's love to misquote, has a very famous saying, "Injustice anywhere is injustice everywhere." Dr. Enfield retains racist staff because they are friends with members of this 5-0 Board, leading to an uptick in racially-based bullying and violence. No one has cared. Black kids get called the N-word, and the Black educator population falls to barely 3.75%. No one has cared. This Board wages war on queer existence and excuses some of the most disgusting comments on social media from Shaw, district personnel, and faculty, and still, no one cares, and Dr. Enfield takes no action. Now, thanks to the ongoing efforts of Dr. Enfield and the 5-0 Board, we have a new problem. Kids are being told, "F you, I'm just gonna call ICE, and then you'll get deported and be here alone." And mind you, that's irrespective of actual threats from ICE their parents may have warned them about. Literal children are going to their counselors suicidal because they don't want to lose their parents, siblings, and family members to ICE, even though many of them are here legally and/or are citizens of this country. The lack of moral integrity you and your supporters have as it relates to bigotry and racism directed towards your BIPOC and queer students, families, and staff needs to change, because now it's affecting kids in a way because now it's affecting kids in a way not even you can ignore without further making clear your true intentions for this district and its future. So I ask you, will you care now? As an aside, Happy Black History Month to the Black students, staff, district personnel, and families in this district. I know this 5-0 board doesn't value the contribution us and our people bring to this community, but know that I do, and so do many, many more. Stay strong and be blessed. Thank you.
Scott Rossin.
All right. Hi again, I'm Scott Rossin. I'm a teacher in the district, and both of my children were recently a part of sports teams at Chino High School. And along with many families, we were blessed to have Coach Hinkle in the lives of our kids. I want to give the board a different perspective on reinstating Coach Hinkle. So often analogies are overused, but I think in this case, it's the best way to show why the Board of Education should intervene and overrule district administration. So four years ago, our district instituted distance learning. The people who make the decisions in our district were not doctors, but instead they just followed the protocols set in place by the county and other organizations whom would they consult. When we returned to school, students needed to wear masks. There were also rules put into place that made returning students, teachers, and staff have a more difficult time returning to normalcy if they did not receive their COVID vaccine. Again, the administration in our district were not behavioral psychologists or epidemiologists. Instead, they rightfully consulted with local organizations on what to do because that's their job. These district decisions led to a large group of parents who felt that the decisions were being made by our district were not in the best interests of our kids. These parents didn't care about precedents or legalese, they just wanted what's best for our students. And now our school board is led by one of these parents. So now we're left with the decision that was made to remove Mr. Hinkle as A.D. of Chino High School. This decision was not made because he was bad at his job or unsuccessful at what he did. The support he's been given over the past month shows this is quite to the contrary. It was made because the same administration in our district are relying on the advice of outside people to make the decision that affects the lives of the Chino High School community. Today, the parents and kids only want what's best for the kids of Chino High School. They only care about that community. They don't care about what lawyers have told the district or county advisors. They only care about their children, much like the parents from four years ago. I don't fault the administration for our district for any of the decisions they've made. They just want to follow precedents and they don't want to ruffle any feathers. But our board has shown that they don't mind breaking protocol or ruffling outside feathers when those decisions are made in the best interest of the children of our community. So what I'm asking is for our school board to look at the impact Mr. Hinkle's made and the opportunity he has to make in the future and reinstate him as Athletic Director at Chino High School. Be the advocates you were looking for when you were on this side of the microphone. Thank you.
Good evening, board, President Shaw, Cabinet, and everyone in attendance. First, I want to thank President Shaw and the board for coming to visit Chino High School today. As much as I love my freshman transition class with the cool work I get to do with them to impact them, I also appreciate and love all of my students, whether I say it or not. Thank you, Dr. Enfield, for acknowledging that. Now, tonight I want to talk a little bit about the work that our departments have been doing at the secondary level to increase student achievement. Over the last two years, our wonderful leadership, including John Miller and friends, have been doing a great job in encouraging us as a department to increase student achievement. And we can see that through the LCAP process we disseminated tonight. Over the last several years of PLC work with my department, for example, I've seen a marketable increase in the number of students who have been successful at passing what is likely the most difficult class in the district, chemistry. Chemistry is a difficult class because it applies both math and theoretical understanding to something that is abstract for most students, a tough combination for many. As we went through this process, though, I've noticed an achievement gap looking at data. While the top end of our students have gotten better, our lower-end students have decreased markedly. Looking at just a single class this semester, I had 12 students with an F and I had 13 students with an A. Why the wide gap in the middle? Well, there's an obvious culprit, and that culprit is something we've been seeing across society today. Los Angeles Unified School District passed a cellphone ban for all of their courses just a few days ago. That process, while challenging, is really going to affect those students' ability to focus in class, especially in a complex world like chemistry where even the smallest mistake can derail your progress. Cellphones have become an addiction for students. This is no longer a device they text their friends once in a while. The premise I used of responsible use has been turned into, let's see how many TikTok videos I can watch before Swaggart sees me looking at my legs under my desk, or how many people I can bully with my phone, causing a fight to occur outside of our, on our campus. While cellphones are a great tool in the classroom, it's starting, start time to start thinking about, how can we mitigate these risks of cellphones? To close the achievement gap, 12 Fs and 13 As is not how I want to run a classroom. And by bringing these students in away from the addictive nature of cellphones and into the light of positivity and positive A-through-G growth is the way that we improve our school district in addition to what we're already doing as a faculty staff. Thank you for your time.
Hi. Today I'm here to talk about Chino High. I have been a member of the Chino community for over 30 years. I know, that's not a long time. Not if we take into account the families who've been here for generations after generations. But I'm here to proudly say, over this time, I have been adopted and I have been accepted into the community with open arms. I feel like I am part of this amazing community. I say this because being part of this community includes my children, children being part of alumnis from Chino High, at least four of my five. I still have one at Chino High, being a junior at Chino High School presently. Throughout the years, my children have been part of the special ed program, have been part of the honors classes, the AP courses, part of the track team, part of the cross-country team, part of the 77th Calvary, part of the football team, and part of the baseball team. And of course, through all of that, I have been part of all those boosters. Along with raising our family in Chino, I have been privileged to be part of the CVUSD staff at Magnolia for over 30 years. I add this with lots of pride. This has allowed me to be part, not just my family at Chino, but part of the community of our schools. I understand that the CVUSD, we are in the business of students, what is best for each one of our children, what they're learning, and what is best for each one of them. I know that. I believe that, and I live that daily, not just for my own children, but for each child that walks through my classroom. I can proudly say that I presently have a junior at Chino High School, a BST student, one of the first-class members of the BST that Chino Valley brought into existence to Chino High School. He's not just a BST student, but he is striving. He is part of the football program, the baseball program, and ASB. And I say that, of course, as a proud mom. He just got voted in as the 2526 Business Manager. I will add this because he was also one of the few students of the tragedy. And I say this as my time is closing. They had lots of tragedy. I'm here to ask you, with all their loss, please reinstate Mr. Hinkle as our A.D. We need him there.
Evening. I stand before you today not just as a concerned member of this school community, but as someone who has witnessed firsthand the dedication, passion, and unwavering commitment of Mr. Hinkle, the former Athletic Director of Chino High School. His leadership has shaped not only our athletic programs, but the lives of countless students who have been fortunate enough to work with him. I am the parent of a Chino High School freshman football player. We are here today because of a heartbreaking and tragic event and an accident that none of us had foreseen. It is a tragedy that has deeply impacted our school, our families, and our hearts. In my family, we think about Chase every day. We pray for his family every night. There's nothing anyone can do to make this loss make sense, but we don't understand why Mr. Hinkle and the students of Chino High School are being punished for what happened. Over the years, Mr. Hinkle has dedicated endless hours, long nights, early mornings, and weekends to ensuring that our athletes are given every opportunity to grow, compete, and succeed, not just in sports, but in life. He has been more than an Athletic Director. He has been a mentor, a role model, and a steady presence for students who needed guidance. He has taught integrity, discipline, teamwork, and perseverance, values that extend far beyond the playing field or the court. I ask you to listen to the voices of students, parents, coaches, and faculty who have been impacted by his leadership. He is not just an Athletic Director, he is a cornerstone of Chino High School's culture, someone who has given so much of himself for the benefit of our children. To lose him as our Athletic Director is a disservice to everything we stand for as an educational institution that values fairness, growth, and second chances. I urge you to reconsider the decision to remove Mr. Hinkle from his position as Athletic Director, not out of disregard for the tragedy that occurred this summer, but because we must honor his years of service, his impact, and his commitment to Chino High School. We ask that you give him the opportunity to continue making a difference in the lives of our students, just as he always has. Our freshman football players witnessed the horrendous loss of their teammate. They then lost their freshman coaches. Our football program lost their head coach, and our entire school lost their Athletic Director. What's next? How far up will this go? These boys in this school have suffered enough.
Dear members of the school board, I'm reading this on behalf of Terry Baronis, Typus Clerk, Athletic Department. But as I read this, this actually meets with a lot of staff, students, and volunteers. Dear members of the school board, I'm writing to express my strong recommendation for the reappointment of Michael Hinkle as the Athletic Director of Chino High School. Over the course of my 11 years of working closely with Michael Hinkle, I have witnessed firsthand the invaluable contributions he has made to our athletic program, our students, and our entire school community. Although his time in this role, Michael Hinkle has consistently demonstrated outstanding leadership, dedication, and a deep commitment to fostering a positive and competitive athletic environment. His ability to manage diverse teams, cultivate student-athlete growth, and build strong relationships with coaches, parents, and faculty was truly remarkable. Under the leadership of our athletic program, not only achieved tremendous success in competition, but also saw significant improvements in overall student engagement, character development, and athletic performance. I fully recognize that decisions regarding staffing can be difficult, but I believe that bringing Michael Hinkle back is crucial for the continued success and well-being of our athletic programs. Their understanding of the unique needs of our students, coupled with their proven track record of program management, would allow us to reestablish the level of excellence and support that our athletes deserve. In addition to their professional expertise, Michael Hinkle possesses a rare and admirable blend of passion, integrity, and genuine care for the students that he serves. He worked tirelessly to create an environment where every student-athlete felt valued and supported and was instrumental in creating initiatives and promoted leadership, sportsmanship, and team building. The sense of the community within our athletic department during Michael Hinkle's tenure was palpable and is something we truly miss. I strongly urge the board to consider bringing Michael Hinkle back to Chino High to continue the positive legacy they built. Their return would undoubtedly be profound and a lasting impact of our students, athletes, and broader school community. I believe Michael Hinkle is uniquely qualified to restore and elevate our athletic programs to the standards we all aspire to achieve. Thank you for considering the recommendation. Should you require any additional information or you would like to discuss Michael Hinkle's qualifications further, I would be happy to provide more details.
Good evening. My comments seem a little out of place. My condolences to the community and the family that others are speaking about tonight, but I came tonight to talk about actually an agenda item, number 2A, the resolution opposing the adoption of South Coast Air Quality Management District's proposed amended rules 1111 and 1121. I'm thankful for your district, for your board, to have the leadership to stand up, to bring this to the attention of your community, to the community at large. I have thankfully read the article in the Orange County Register about a month and a half ago that brought this issue to light, and since I had the opportunity to attend a couple of air quality district meetings, giving public comment and hearing public comment of what's going on with this situation. I'm very concerned about the cost that this is going to bring, not only to each of us as residents in the South Coast Air Quality District, but to the districts as well. In the last meeting I attended, there were several people speaking on behalf of schools and school districts and the costs that will be incurred as a result of this. And many of those air quality district members, they kind of poo-pooed it away, and they were like, it says right in the name, it's residential. But the issue that they talked about is that this is targeted to the manufacturers. Where are you gonna go and purchase the water heater that you need? It's not gonna be available. So, and one of the people that was on the board, on the Advisory Committee for the Small Business Association, the Advisory, Small Business Advisory Committee, so they're, they're in it, they shared their personal estimate that they received for upgrading to an electric water heater. And the article said it could be anywhere from $6,000 to $20,000, and I was like, oh my gosh, can that be true? This guy shared his actual assessment in San Clemente would be, was $12,000, and that was just for the retrofitting of his home. It did not include the water heater. So it's in fact a problem, and I'm thankful that you guys have taken the leadership. There is a meeting tomorrow morning. It would be great if one of your staff could be there to share your resolution and the lead that you're taking on this issue. Thank you.
Lisa G.
Good evening. Yesterday, Ms. Shaw joined the Liberty Justice Center in publicly claiming victory against the state in the lawsuit over the forced outing policy that the district passed in 2023. The Liberty Justice Center put out a press release that was so full of disinformation and manipulative omissions that it is even more embarrassing to know that this law firm is representing our district. Then, Ms. Shaw, you got on social media and continued to lie that the district had won the suit. While I hate to interrupt your celebration with actual facts, I wanted to point out that a few that didn't, somehow didn't make it into your post. First, the forced outing policy that you introduced in 2023 was in fact struck down by the courts. In both the preliminary and subsequent permanent injunction, the judge ruled that the policy was discriminatory because it targeted a specific group of students and violated the Constitution's equal protection clause. The one portion of the policy that you were able to revive was the portion that requires parental notification when there's a change to any student's records. Well, guess what? Parents have always had the right to view their students' records, so this policy was mostly for show and for the board to save face. The state never indicated it would challenge the revised policy. Even though the most recent ruling, again, against the district was last September, Liberty Justice Center saw an opportunity yesterday to falsely claim victory because the deadline passed for appeals. Well, it was the Liberty Justice Center that would have been the one to appeal since they lost the case. they lost the case. If none of this makes any sense, that's the point. They and Ms. Shaw have spun the truth beyond recognition, as usual. They would like to gaslight you into believing that all the resources this district devotes to lawsuits is somehow worth it. But all they've done so far is divide this community by spreading disinformation, instilling fear, and driving our valued teachers out of this district. But at some point, can we stop talking about how students identify and start talking about academics and special ed, class size and teacher retention, college prep and vocational training, you know, the things that will help students be productive and successful members of this community? I mean, isn't that what this board should be focused on anyway? Or is forcing your politics and religion on our students and families the only thing that matters to you? I think most of us already know that answer. Thank you.
Angel Resendez?
Boys will be boys, is what my principal implied when I told her my concern about the district dress code. Boys can't help themselves. You will be, your stomach, your shoulders, your legs, they're a distraction. You need to hide them. You need to put on a t-shirt, a long shirt, pants to school. Even if it's hot, you can't wear a spaghetti strap because that would distract boys from getting their education. They can't help themselves. They don't have self-control. But this is not accurate. This is sexist, and this is discriminating towards the females in the Chino Valley Unified School District. Today, I come here to speak out as a student from Cal Arrow Junior High, 7th grade, that I ask you guys to support the females, to maybe review the dress code again, to maybe allow females to express themselves through fashion. I am not asking to just let us walk around in overly inappropriate clothes, but maybe be more lenient towards it. Because we are junior high students. We're becoming an adult. We are using fashion to express ourselves. And I understand that these dress code policies were made so students can focus on their schoolwork and just be focused. But I feel like if you make females feel supported at school, they will be thankful. As a female myself, my friend, she got dress coded because she had barely an inch showing, and she was crying. She was going home to her mother crying because she doesn't understand why her stomach is such, it's just being so sexualized, that the school is teaching her to hide her body because it is shown as a sexual object, that boys always will see you as a sexual object. It is 2025, and we are evolving to newer styles, newer fashion, and crop tops, spaghetti straps, halter tops. They represent youth. They represent fashion. What I am asking is that you just look over it, that you just consider this and maybe change some rules so it's non-discriminating, because it is aiming towards what females wear. Thank you for listening.
Crystal Barrett?
Crystal Barrett? All right. Good evening. So this is the first meeting I've been able to attend since we've had our new board. So I first want to say congratulations to Mr. Cervantes on your new seat, and congratulations to Cruz and Nau for being re-elected. I'm truly grateful for each and every one of you up here. So I have been attending these meetings for years now. And when I first started, our board looked a lot different. And many parents and I were repeatedly told that we're the minority, and that the majority of the district's parents didn't have our same views. Well, since then, every single one of these seats have been up for reelection. And I think it's safe to say that our voices have been heard, the community has spoken, and that we are the majority, and that you guys are listening to parents now. So please remember that when you hear otherwise. So thank you for stepping up to serve in these positions. You guys are all here for a reason. And in today's world, we need individuals like you that are going to stand up and fight for what's right, and fight for our children, and fight for our parents' voices and rights. So with that being said, I want to say congratulations on your victory in court this week with California that did not choose to oppose the court's decision that Chino Valley's authority to notify parents when students request changes on their unofficial or official records. This is a major win for parents' rights and transparency between parents and the district, is what we've been asking for for so many years now. So thank you for that. This is a powerful decision, a powerful action, because this shows that we're not going to go away quietly, right? That any action that undermines or attempts to strip away parental rights is going to be challenged, and it's going to be challenged by Chino Valley Unified School District. And I'm so proud to have a board that is going to stand up and fight for that. So this victory wouldn't have been possible without a board like you guys, without a board that is strong and bold and courageous to not only take on these seats, but to take on the state. So thank you, guys. Please continue to work and to fight hard, because we know this fight is not over, and we wouldn't be able to do it without you guys. So please know that you have the full support of all of us in the community that have voted you in, because you guys do represent the majority. And again, I just thank you, guys. I appreciate you, guys, because I am proud to say I'm a parent in Chino Valley Unified School District because of the board that we have. And whenever I talk to people or meet new friends, and I tell them where I'm from, they know who we are, because you guys have put a stamp on the map for us. And I thank you, and I appreciate you, guys, so much.
Evan Gray?
Hello, board members. My name is Evan Gray. I'm a class of 2024 graduate from Chino High School. I've been a part of this school district for 13 years. I attended kindergarten through 6th grade at Rhodes Elementary School with Mrs. Tracy Freed. I then went to Magnolia, and then to Chino High School. I've been a part of the Chino High School wrestling, football, and tennis teams. Under Michael Hinkle's Athletic Department, he has supported me in my journey of attaining six league championships and two CIF championships. I have never met anyone in this district more dedicated to the students and athletes of CBUSD than Michael Hinkle. He is always supporting students and athletes every single day. Just yesterday, I went to Chino High School to pick my little brother up from his, watching the Chino girls' basketball game, and I saw Michael Hinkle there, supporting the students, even though he's no longer the athletic director. This shows to me that the title isn't what makes him want to support the students. That's just the kind of man he is, and it shows his character and his values. He has inspired me to become a coach myself. I'm now the assistant coach for Chino Hills High School for tennis. I ask you to reconsider reinstating Michael Hinkle as the athletic director. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, and thank you for all of our speakers. We do value your voices, and we appreciate you coming tonight. And now we're on to changes and deletions. Pat, are there any changes or deletions?
The following changes and deletions are on the agenda. Item 2C2, Resolution 2024-2025-53, Release of Temporary Certificated Employees, Page 20 under the third whereas. Delete 2024/2025 and insert 2025/2026. Item 3E1, Certified Personnel Items, Pages 153, 154, and 157 are yellow-sheeted. And Item 3D2, Agreements for Contracted Consultant Services, Page 66. Delete Number CIIS-2425-142, Digisert Inc. No further changes or deletions.
Thank you, Pat. And now we're on to action items. The first item is 2A1, Resolution 2024-2025-52, Opposing the Adoption of SCA-QMD Proposed Amended Rules 111 and 1121. Recommends that the Board of Education adopt Resolution 2024-2025-52, opposing the adoption of SCA-QMD Proposed Amended Rules 1111 and 1121. May I have a motion, please? You could use your light. Mr. Monroe? Thank you. May I have a second? Mr. Cervantes? Thank you. Any comments, questions, discussions? I'm going to clear the thing so I know that if you have a new one or a comment on it. Seeing that there's none, I'm just going to go ahead and put a couple of things on record. When this was brought to my attention by Nick Wilson and Rita Louf, who is a board member for the county of San Bernardino, I was quite shocked. Of course, I'm not too surprised that things are done under our noses without bringing it to our attention. But just to back up, when it comes to trying to make us pretty much go all-electric, I think we come into some major dangers. We've seen, you know, recently with the power outages, even though some of our schools are not indirect fire hazards, they are on a grid that is. And Chino Hills High School experienced six full days without electricity, including intermittent times of shut-off. And sometimes we get no notice, sometimes we get notice. One of our schools, our elementaries, Dr. Enfield and the staff worked very, very hard and spent money out of the general funds to go plug in diesel to go power our school up over there so our kids can have an education. Remember, our kids do count on going to school, not only to be, for us to provide an education, but a lot of them don't have electricity in the community as well, because they're being shut off, and they do count on being fed there. So with that said, there was a lot of safety hazards when that happens, and it looks like we're just recklessly allowing the state to make us all go through all-electric. It just doesn't make sense to me, guys. And when this was brought to my attention, there was no way I wasn't going to bring it to your guys' attention, because, look, this affects housing, like everybody said, but the new rule that they're about to vote on, some of it already affects our district. Let's be real, it does. And then the new rule will definitely affect our district into having to retrofit everything into electric. It just doesn't make sense. I would like to bring this to the attention, but I also would like us to be, coming from a parent into a board member, it was very important for our board to be a voice, because we're, you know, the voice of you guys. So as a body, I also found it very interesting, when I looked at the list of school districts that they asked, I think I saw one in San Bernardino County, and the rest were in LA County, right, Dr. Enfield? And we were never asked any input for that. And it just boggles my mind how these people make rules, mandates, and laws, and they never come down to the level where it affects the actual people that they're making these rules, mandates, and laws for. This is very expensive. Just so you guys know, I would love for you guys to look at this. If you have a house in Orange County, San Bernardino County, and I think LA County, this will affect you, but also all school districts in those counties as well. I did write something just so I could put it on record, and that way, if you want to go back or share it, that way it's there and it's more clear. I put, "Chino Valley Unified is here to stand up for our students, staff, and families. These proposed amendments, this new rule, are nothing more than another unfunded mandate and rule that will drain resources from our classrooms, hurt students, and put our schools at risk. We were never consulted on these changes, yet we were expected to foot the bill at the expense of teacher salaries, student programs, campus safety, you name it, forcing schools to transition to all-electric systems, knowing our power grid is unreliable, is reckless, and irresponsible. We demand that SCA-QMD reject these amendments and work with school districts to find real cost-effective solutions that don't compromise students' learning and safety. Our priority is education, not political agendas that take resources from our kids. We are good stewards of public funds." And I think that, I hope the board supports this, so our district staff can be a voice in this process, and hopefully raise some noise in our community, and for maybe other boards to also jump on and be a voice so this is stopped. With that said, I have nothing further, unless any other board members put their light back on. Anybody want to say anything?
Yeah, you know, there's many budgets. There are many budgets that can't afford electricity. So it's really tight in a lot of school districts. These people are a bunch of weirdos.
Mr. Cruz, there was actually no help either with when we got our electric shut-off, just so you guys know. We went to Southern California Edison. We went to Assembly members. Nobody is willing to try. We went to the Department of Ed. I contacted Tony Thurman's office, asked him for help. They contacted Dr. Enfield and pretty much said that there was nothing they can do to help us, so the cost is coming out of pocket, which I find very disturbing, that we're not advocating for these costs to be reimbursed to the district when we're put in a position where we have to do what's right. So we have to use general funds to ensure the kids have an education in a safe place at school. So, yeah, they just don't think about it, Mr. Cruz. We see that with proposed laws. They make laws, and I can guarantee most districts are never consulted when they make these big laws that affect all of us, and we're just expected to, you know, implement it and move on and bear the brunt of what they're trying to do. I mean, it just boggles my mind. But again, I think we put enough on record to be able to at least expose it and have a voice in the process through this. With that said, I will clear the system so you guys can take a vote. Go ahead and put that in. And preferential?
Yes.
Thank you. And all members voted yes. The motion passes with 4 to 0 with Mr. Nau absent. Okay. And we have our next item. Did you want to say something? Your light's on. Cleared it. It's 2A2, 2025 California School Boards Association Delegate Assembly Election. Recommend that the Board of Education vote for no more than five candidates to the California School Boards Association Delegate Assembly, Subregion 16B, for term beginning April 1st, 2025 through March 31st, 2027. Can I have a motion to vote for up to five names on the ballot?
Yes, I'd like to motion.
Thank you, Mr. Cruz. Can I have a second? You want his motion?
Yeah. The names are Gwen, Roger, Eric Swanson, and Kathy Thomas. Thompson.
Gwen, Roger, Eric Swanson, Kathy Thomas.
Yes.
And may I have a second? Thank you, Mr. Monroe. I appreciate that. Comments, questions? Seeing that there's none on the light system, board members, please register your vote. Preferential?
Yes.
Thank you. And all members for voting yes, the motion passes with a vote of 4 to 0. Mr. Nau is absent. And the next item is 2B1, School-Wide Title I Program for Eagle Canyon Elementary School, Hidden Trails Elementary School, and Townsend Junior High School for the 2025-2026 school year. Recommends that the Board of Education adopt the school-wide Title I program for Eagle Canyon Elementary School, Hidden Trails Elementary School, and Townsend Junior High School for the 2025-2026 school year. May I have a motion, please? Thank you, Mr. Monroe. May I have a second? Thank you, Mr. Cervantes. Comments, questions, discussions? Hearing nothing further, board members, please register your vote. Preferential?
Yes.
Thank you. I think I'm waiting for one more. Thank you, Mr. Cruz. And the motion passes with a vote of 4 to 0. And the next item is 2C1, Public Notice and Hearing Regarding the Associated Chino Teachers ACT Initial Bargaining Proposal to the Chino Valley Unified School District for a Successor Collective Bargaining Agreement effective July 1st, 2025. Recommends that the Board of Education give public notice and conduct a public hearing regarding the Associated Chino Teachers ACT Initial Bargaining Proposal to the Chino Valley Unified School District for a Successor Collective Bargaining Agreement effective July 1st, 2025. I now open the public hearing at 7:08 PM. Patricia, are there any speakers?
There are none.
Thank you. I now close the hearing at 7:08 PM. The next item is 2C2. Next item is 2C2, Resolution 2024-2025-53, Release of Temporary Certificated Employees. Recommends that the Board of Education adopt Resolution 2024-2025-53, Release of Temporary Certificated Employees, and authorize the superintendent or his designated to send notice of release to employees affected with an effective date of June 30th, 2025. May I have a motion, please? Thank you, Mr. Monroe. May I have a second? Thank you, Mr. Cruz. Any comments, questions, discussions? Hearing nothing further, board members, please register your vote. Preferential?
Yes.
Thank you. And the motion passes with a vote of 4 to 0. Next item is 2C3, Next item is 2C3, Resolution 2024-2025-51, Notice of Layoff of Certain Classified Staff Pursuant to Education Code 45117 and 45298. Recommend that the Board of Education adopt Resolution 2024-2025-51, Notice of Layoff of Certain Classified Staff Pursuant to Education Code 45117 and 45298. May I have a motion, please? Thank you, Mr. Monroe. May I have a second? Thank you, Mr. Cruz. Comments, questions, discussions? Please use your light system. Hearing nothing further, board members, please register your vote. Preferential?
Yes.
Thank you. And the motion passes with a vote of four to zero. That concludes action items. Consent. Now we're on to consent. Board members, if you have an item to pull, please indicate so on your monitors. I will wait for a second. Seeing that there's none for the consent items, may I have a motion, please? Thank you, Mr. Monroe. May I have a second? Thank you, Mr. Cervantes. Board members, please register your vote. Preferential?
Yes.
Thank you very much. And the motion passes with a vote of four to zero. Mr. Na absent. And next, we're on to Board Member Communications. Mr. Juan Cervantes.
It's been a good week. Today was really good, and I'm sure you'll probably touch on it some more, President Shaw, but had a good time touring Chino High today, the BST. What an outstanding program. They do such a good job over there, and it's, it was great to see some teachers today and say hello, and just to see the outstanding work that's being done, so that's always awesome. And another thing, just, it's a blessing to see you guys here supporting Mr. Hinkle. I love seeing that. And I want to see you guys support those that you care about, that you, that you bled next to, that you work next to, all the hard, blessed wind and tears, like we say, that you put in. That's amazing, because that's the community that we have here, and that's the support we have here, so I really appreciate that. And then, looking forward to Career Day tomorrow at Woodcrest Junior High School. It's going to be pretty awesome, speaking to those youngsters, getting them all excited about the reason they're going to school, to get, not only to further their education, but to get a job one day, so it's exciting to see that. And then also looking forward to Student Government Day next week. That's going to be a lot of fun. So thank you, guys, very much for everything, and look forward to seeing you out there.
Thank you, Mr. Cervantes. And, Mr. Monroe, we have a gift for you. Mr. Cruz asks that you go before him. Your mic should be on.
There we go. All right. For a couple of things, I had opportunity to, to attend a couple of the senior nights at the various high schools. They were fantastic, to watch families and friends celebrate our outgoing seniors this year. Ayala did an incredible job on their basketball game. It was almost like I was at a Bulls game back in the 80s with Michael Jordan, the lights coming out. It was pretty phenomenal. I did attend the Future Freshman Night at Lugo, and just want to tell them what an outstanding job they did. It was a great event. It was packed in there, and a really fun event to attend, so. Couple of things coming up that I do want to put out for everybody. I know Mr. Cervantes touched on a couple. The Festival of Arts next week at Magnolia, the 25th and 26th, that's always great to attend, just to see the, the number of talented kids and their artwork in our district. They do a fantastic job of putting that together and culminating that, that artwork of all of our students, so I look forward to attending that this next week. There's a couple of things in Chino Hills from the Parks and Rec Commission I wanted to bring to those. They're doing, of course, they want to be aware of the Water Conservation Poster Contest. That's open for submissions, so if you have a youngster or a teenager that is into art that I just spoke about, they can submit that. The submissions are due by March 14th. The city of Chino has summer jobs. Those of you that have kids that are Chino Hills, summer jobs, those of you that have kids 16 and over, they're hiring for summer. Great opportunity to get into the community services there and gain some experience and some connections as they build their experience going into college. And a lot of times, if they can get in when they're 16, they do a lot of rehires the next year, so it gives them opportunity to, to get some work experience during the summer when they don't have such a heavy workload with school. And then also on that front of Chino Hills, the Teen Advisory Board is taking applications. That's a very popular board. They are all over the place and rubbing elbows with all kinds of city officials, attending all kinds of events, and they really have a lot of input on youth events in that city. So if you're interested on the Teen Advisory Board, they're taking applications now. It will close March 14th or after they get 60 applications. So if you are thinking about it, jump on that opportunity. It's a great experience for your youth, so. And with that, that's all I have tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Monroe. And now, Mr. Cruz. Hold on.
Amanda, you know, this is a contribution from you, many teachers and everyone else. There was, there was a research conducted by Stanford University, Harvard University, and Dartmouth College, and they published it on Edsource, and the title was Article About New Stanford Database Tracking Learning Laws and Gains. The Education Recovery Scoreboard, Scorecard shows our students in 2024 scores soared to 43% of grade level above 2019 pre-pandemic levels in math and 34% above in reading, outpacing many districts. We were number one in California, and we were four or five in the nation. So the key to the success was... The key to success was our early return in-person learning. Probably that was one of the keys. First in San Bernardino County. As well Superintendent Enfield noted, that we also extended 30 minutes, maximizing student support. Teachers collaborating tirelessly on essential standards and assessments, while students and parents rose to the challenge with the partnership and so forth. But it's really incredible, when you think, we're number one in California with this huge spread of student achievement, because you're always talking about student achievement, and it's amazing. So, so our district is a very special district. So I have to tell, thank you, Amanda, doing so much for our children, and so, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mondo, you're good?
Yeah, I'm good.
You sure?
Yeah, no comments tonight, thank you. I'll relinquish my time to you.
Oh, thanks. Okay, I'll make it quick so I don't have my mic cut off. Really quick. March 8th, Step It Up, 8:00 AM, Magnolia. Our Chino Valley is Sir Optimists. They put on a great event for our girls going into junior high. You know, the parents are usually welcome to attend, too. I, I had the honor to be there the last, I think, three years. It's a great event. It's very motivating. I know junior high could be a big thing, you know, for, for our girls, so if you can, if you didn't sign up, just check your Peachjar. There is more information in there. Peachjar is wonderful. It's where all the, you know, digital flyers go in, so please check that if you have a soon-to-be junior higher. I do want to thank, I know Pat, we've been working together. She's been working super hard to get our elected officials to come, and so we can showcase to them, you know, how great of a job all of our staff and our teachers are doing for our kids. I think it's so important. With that said, finally, which, I'll be fair, I've never offered this person a tour, but she took it up. Our Congresswoman, Young Kim, and Andrew, one of her staffers, and Alex, her head chief over there in DC, had came down today, and I want to thank Mr. Miller and all of Chino High for giving them such a great tour. It was, you know, they toured the best program, but they also got to tour some other things that, you know, it's really exciting to kind of showcase those things and get encouragement, but also get support with funding when needed. I think that is really important when they're on the ground, so it did mean a lot that they came down and spent a few hours with us, so thank you for your time, Dr. Enfield, too. Mr. Cervantes, thank you for joining along. It was a pretty cool thing just to kind of take them and show them why Chino Valley is so great, so we do appreciate their time for coming. And I think I had a couple other things. I mean, Mr. Cruz highlighted the great things that are, that, you know, our district's doing. We know Chino's good, great, amazing. We know that they set the bar pretty high, and I think that's another reason why I jumped into this position alongside all of our great board members, is to allow our district to do what they do. I was born, raised, went to school here, minus, I think, two years when I was in a shelter in Fontana. So Chino is where my heart's at, and just to clear the noise and distractions so they can do the good works that they do, it's proven, it's proven in the numbers. I mean, some of us can love and hate, you know, numbers, but the reality is, when the numbers are moving up, when the rest of California, or the majority of California, is moving down, we still have another handful of districts in there. I think that's a great thing. There is a lot of requirements that our Department of Ed at the top level put onto these districts, and it's our job to make sure that we are a voice when those things do not make sense in supporting our students' success. With that said, I just want to tell Chino Valley, you guys are amazing. We did win a big fight. In California, you have to be creative. You have to find the gray when you want to do what's right, unfortunately, with the majority of the legislators that are up there, and we found the gray. You supported us. We found someone to secure the funding, because, you know, Sacramento bureaucrats, they're relentless, but we need to be relentless back when it comes to student success and supporting our students and our families here. And we did, we won. We have a policy dated back to March of 2024 that has been in effect. It hasn't been touched. The Bonta decided not to go after us for that one, so we still notify parents even in California, and that is amazing news, so good job, guys. Keep up the great work. With that said, before Patricia cuts my mic, I will just say, you guys are amazing. I love Chino Valley. We'll continue to fight the good fight together, and I adjourn this Board of Education meeting, yes, John, at 7:21 PM.